Okay. Okay, nice job, Daryl. Okay. Okay. Alright, so we're reconvening, we're back. Alright, so next up, on the agenda, we are at the, any person with business for the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. The council may not comment, except as authorized by the Texas government code. Linda, has anyone signed up to speak for visitor citizens?
Eric Hancock.
Alright, Mr. Hancock has signed up to speak. Eric, if you're out there, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Alright, Eric Hancock, eight two four nine Tremont Place, Frisco, Texas. Seven five oh three four, one-third owner, twenty acres at the front of town. Tonight, I will be, yes.
That's you for it. Well, when you say your address, that's the address of your brother.
Uh, yeah, yeah, and I also use that for my residence in state, and that is legal. Go on.
So that's your address?
Um, yes, that is my state address. I think you've had several addresses, um, that when you worked, uh, when you used to work at Drexel back in two thousand eighteen, um, and you used to use that as an address in different ones, that is an address that I can legally use. He has more than one home and location often. So, um, you know, you know, when you get over the target, like the old bombers used to say back in the day, you start getting a lot of flack. So keep talking. Go on, Mark.
We're just asking for clarity on the address. Just asking for clarity on the address. Thank you.
Okay, can I go on and get my three minutes now, guys?
If he's still on, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, here we go. I'll be speaking tonight on, um, several issues that I believe need to be seriously looked into that could help show fraud existing in Lakewood Village at the highest level. I believe that Lakewood Village is the most capable town in all of Denton County of fraud because it is so very, very small. It only six hundred, it's six hundred and fifty people or so, it really is like a small subdivision. No one comes to the council meetings, even pre-COVID, maybe four or five people, literally four or five people. And I understand. Who would want to hear a mayor at seven thirty on a Thursday night blow the eight for one and a half to three and a half hours, and then the largely silent council these days, just as I with no questions asked? But after twenty-six years of selling land in and around the immediate Lakewood Village area and still selling the much land, I sense there is a growing resentment for the mayor's lack of public accountability and his self-grandizing dominance, as evidenced in his many town letters and myriad executive, i.e. closed sessions and closed projects that have gone on for years. When is the last time a representative from Land Plan ever spoke to the town at a council meeting? Five years ago, before that, I think it was five years. What about Project Lightning Bolt, Boy Scout, Leftfield, Slade Rock, Century of Sunset Cove, Latong? Uh, I mean, what about these? We haven't seen anybody, no real discussions with developers, one in six years. But yet, we, that's how I remember, maybe there was one more, but in six years, one developer. And we were told three or four years ago that Mark and Daryl were meeting with developers almost daily. What development has been done? Nothing. It may take me several months or a year to discuss what I've observed over the last eighteen years since I first helped Mayor Mark Vargas purchase this lake lot in which he now lives, but only have three minutes. Since these meetings will be recorded and posted to YouTube, if you find yourself listening to this or in the future, maybe a subsequent visitor and citizens forum, please share with others, and if you personally see something, say something, especially to Denton County Investigators and the Department of Justice Dallas Division. Do not be so naive to think that anything can be changed in this town by the election process. I believe that has been controlled by having elections at Town Hall and there's a challenger for years. And the election process will be one of my future visitor citizen forum topics I plan to speak on, uh, because I only have less than a minute. Other topics include the relationship between the town auditor and the mayor as it relates to the University of Texas at Dallas, Secretary Linda Asbell's hundred and five thousand dollar compensation package and why it matters, the inability for all elected council members to see all town documents without first notifying the six-figure salary secretary who notifies the mayor and why that came to be, the apparent lack of steady employment for retired associate Professor Vargas since two thousand eighteen and why we should care. I believe our town exists now and has for some time is primarily Mark Vargas's Alamo, if you will. It has become his personal fortress, well-stocked with other people's money, other people's money's hired attorneys, other people's money's paid E and O insurance, not to hold off an invading army or protect our health and safety, but to hold off the truth of how and why he operates the way he does until he can get on a better financial or circumstantial footing. Further, he has used this weaponry paid for by all of us for his personal benefit and his personal vendettas that amount to nothing more than jealousy and pettiness. I look forward to elaborating and hopefully enlightening in the future months. There has never been a better time to speak out against fraud in Lakewood Village. Thank you.
Hey Linda, has anyone else signed up? No one else, okay. Next up, we will go into the public hearing. So the public hearing is scheduled to provide an opportunity to make a comment on proposed zoning change. Uh, you can all see, this is basically a Sam Hill. This is the zoning change, which is the initial zoning on the triangle out front to annexed in, kind of rolled together with the previous Sam Hill and LEISD PD, which we approved back in April of nineteen. So we're folding it all in together into this one. So, uh, we now have a public hearing on that. And so, uh, Linda, I think you're going to summarize the comments that we received, the written comments.
We received three written comments. We have a response from Allison Smith, has three hundred parts of the property, supporting the zoning change. We have a response from Michael Smith, has three hundred one part of the property, supporting the zoning change. And we have a response from Lanning Hancock, and he looks three parts of this property as the entrance, this, uh, this is a conference meeting, however, and I will read his response to Abby Riddick. Opposed unless you can guarantee that no part of the ordinance counting would remove these roads or reevesments that we currently use to access property, current entrance, and doing so was considerable to those of our property.
Okay, so we've got those. Linda, I'm going to ask you to include those in the packet when we're, um, in the minutes, in the minutes for the, uh, let's pick the ride. Okay, um, has anyone signed up to speak during the public hearing? Okay, so Eric has signed up to speak. Eric, you there?
I'm here, guys.
Okay. Go ahead.
Eight two four nine Tremont Place, in case you forgot, Frisco, Texas, seven five oh three four, one-third owner, plus or minus twenty acres, lakefront.
Eric, Eric, let me interrupt you again for a second. So, um, you've, uh, engaged an attorney to interact with the city, and, uh, your attorney talked to our attorney and already made some, uh, requests, which our attorney has forwarded on?
No, 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 that's not correct. No, no, that's not correct. My, my, my.
Eric, Eric, let me speak. So you have engaged an attorney, he's requested information from our attorney, our attorney has sent the information back to your attorney, so if you wish to speak, that's fine, but you've engaged an attorney, so we are not going to be responding to you, we're going to be responding through our attorney. Do you, you're, you're, do, do, say what you like in the public hearing. Go ahead.
Okay. Alright. So the question would have been to each of you, and I guess that's going to come back to me after you already vote, um, it would have been, I'm asking the mayor and any city council member who actually would like to be a part of the town discussion. And the question would be, does any part of the zoning change support or could it be used to support the removal of my current entrance easement access? Mark tells me y'all are not allowed to talk to me, so I need to say a few things on that if it happens. If you did have this, that would be a regulatory taking that is unconstitutional against your oaths of office. It is against the state without first making compensation for that taking. This is an example of other people's money and attorneys that, uh, become involved when it doesn't need to happen. Now, how it affects the town property mine versus what Councilman Bushon had said that he and Daryl's property, he said, Mayor Proton Daryl West, and I might have to drive a little further to get to our houses, but he thought it'd be worth it because we get a signal light on this new, you know, that has to do with that property. That's apples and oranges. Daryl West's property is less than a quarter of an acre. I'm eighty times the size of that. My property is huge and can have horses, multiple homes, a development, forget commercial, it's currently zoned for what I mentioned. I have recent off-market comps because I keep them off-market or all your property taxes would go up. Your homesteads would be going up ten percent per year, count on it. Okay? So I can come in, as I told them before, um, and I recorded, and I mentioned it to Daryl and Clint, ten to fifteen off-market comps to prove value. So after twenty-six years as the immediate area real estate expert, and I've been compensated and successfully, successfully for Lakewood Village litigation, I know the value and the devaluation of having to make us, our future owner go a half a mile up to, uh, up to five thousand two hundred feet, that's a mile, by another iteration, by a new plan from Land Plan, and I've seen five iterations of their plan. They change all the time. But is it safe? Yeah, it's safe. You can take out the trees and old Lakewood Village signs and leave us to access about two garage spaces and move seven hundred and fifty feet to the north, as Kimberly Horn Engineering suggested, it's totally safe. The Little Elm entrances on the same road, they have them at seventy feet apart, seven hundred and fifty feet apart. It's safe, the entrance is safe, you have no fatalities, no accidents, it's safe for six hundred and fifty people, it'll be safe for three or eighty. So don't get that accordion up El Dorado garbage, but I'll tell you, listen, you don't need to violate the, if you just do it that way, you don't violate the Constitution of the U.S. and the state of Texas, no payment necessary. But listen to this, I have comps in Lakewood Village, I do, off-market for one point one to one point two per acre for land, million, one point one to one point two million for land, no house. I have comps in the area, and I'm talking about within a mile, and Denton CAD would use those, that for larger lots, five hundred thousand per acre, no house, the one point one to one point two is for smaller. But Denton CAD doesn't like to separate good water, bad water, small, large, and I've been told, so let me put it this way, if, it would be more like thinking Clint and Daryl's driveway approaches and ripping them out and saying, hey, go through a neighbor's yard, two or three down, enter your backyard, maybe midway or backyard, to be determined on some iteration down the road, what would that do to your value? That's what it does to mine. So if that happened and you were the local real estate expert and you had comps you kept off-market, would you use those to support your, the devaluation? And I think you would, you know the answer. And I've been told, can those be sealed if produced in court? And I've been told doubtful. So one thing that is real, okay, Mark wanted to buy this with me after working with him on eighteen separate transactions in three years. Him, is him eight, no, it was seven, seven him, twelve others for his sister Diane, brother Eric, and three close associates in three years. So when two thousand and five rolls around, my property becomes available, Mark said, wouldn't it be cool if we bought this together? Well, I wasn't going to purchase with him, but Mr. No Commercial Never Not Ever was saying, you know, a Montessori school would look good there at the corner, and it would, but I wasn't going to purchase with him. This is what it boils down to, jealousy and pettiness. And that's why we have no development here. But one thing that is real, not according up El Dorado, that's just blather and nonsense to anybody with a brain. But what is real is taxes can go up ten percent year over year because Denton CAD will use them, and you will have nobody to blame but your mayor and your council's petty jealousness. And I look forward to shedding a little more light because nobody knows Mark like I do. Thank you, that's all.
Okay, we're back. Uh, Linda, anybody else? No one else is jealousment? No? Okay.
Alright, so I had to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Alright, Daryl's got a motion to close the public hearing.
I am the person that doesn't speak up often.
Clint's got the second. Alright, all of us in favor? Alright, public hearing is closed. Alright, next up, we have the consent agenda. All others on the consent agenda, it's going to be self-explanatory, we've got the minutes, we've got ordinance canceling election, there's.
Variants, I'm going to abstain.
And Matt is going to abstain from the, uh, from the consent agenda. Uh, the variance is seventy-seven, so court, that's a metal roof, and we traditionally approve those if it's at least two of twelve, because you don't need shingles. So that's our standard. I thought we had it coded, I guess Clint did.
I don't.
I looked, I couldn't find it.
We have one roof pitch, we don't have, we don't have an exception.
So, you know, we've probably had to codify that at some future date because it's kind of an automatic thing. And then, um, six forty-five Woodcrest is a zoning issue where, um, the owner has to fix the zoning when he bought it, but just have a garage, that house had no garage. So, and that's the one that Matt's going to abstain on. Any questions on the consent agenda?
I'm making a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Alright, Serena's got a motion to approve the consent, Eric Harris the second, all of us in favor, and Matt is abstaining. Okay, very good. Alright, next up on the, uh, regular agenda, first item is consideration of revolution extending the mayoral disaster declaration. Linda, why don't you take that?
Uh, this is necessary in order to act though, um, the reinvestments coming for the actions that we incurred during the winter storm. So, uh, all of the extra man hours, the, uh, the extra set for man hours, we can, uh, get reimbursed for the, the, I think, uh, what, cop counts.
Generators.
Generators, nine hours for monitoring the generator.
Right.
Nine hours for sucking on water to a mall.
Maybe we can.
We won't get reimbursed for that.
We might be able to, uh, be reimbursed for the stuff that we're going to incur, the damage, the cover, the covered under insurance, um, but it's just necessary, how about the balcony doors, uh, to be supported or back.
And so the way that works is, so I've declared a disaster law, the president, everyone's federal disaster, but my disaster declaration can only last for seven days. So you guys have to extend it so that we can then extend it long enough for us to get the funding. So it's procedural item, um, for you to allow my disaster declaration to go forward without subsequent approval. So that's what you're doing.
If I make a motion that we, uh, approve the resolution extending the mayoral disaster declarations.
Okay, I have a motion to extend the mayoral declaration, and Matt's got the second. All of us in favor? Alright, very good. Alright, thank you. Um, alright, next up, we have consideration of lease agreement with Little Elm Independent School District for recreational use of the property. So anyway, the land swap happened, so when, uh, Little Elm ISD has fifty acres or so in the middle of town, I talked with, uh, the Little Elm ISD, uh, people, with Rod Graves, and, uh, we have, we have two legal department lease grant. Basically, we will get to lease the entire fifteen acres, you know, recreational purposes, uh, that we desire, we have to maintain it. So whatever we do, we have to maintain, um, the only other issue is that if the district wants to use any facilities we put in, then, you know, we would let them use it. So it's, but that's the district, not Little Elm, it's the school district definitely. And I'm, you know, I'm indifferent to, you know, whatever, I can just be nice, and I talked to Eric and Matt, who already does preliminary work, uh, trying to put in maybe an athletic field. But, uh, I think it's really good, they do these agreements all the time with Little Elm, um, until they're ready to use a facility, if they, you know, let people use these big open spaces, but usually soccer fields, uh, because they're relatively low, you know, low capital investments to put in a soccer field. I did talk to Rod, uh, about a year and a half ago, the idea was to try and get like, um, a layout of where the school would go, because the idea would be if we're going to put in infrastructure, be smart, don't put it where the parking lot's going to go, you know, and so they kind of intimated to me that the school would go more south than it would be up at the north, that it would use south to allow a lot more stacking space and, and stuff like that. So the further north we are near City Hall, the better it would start up on the north side, which is kind of really looked at. But, uh, and then we just have kind of a big canvas if we get to a point with. Nice. And it's a zero, obviously a zero cost, we just, I can't. We're all in marriage? Where's the people? Like the battery in the city. Huh?
That's just a meeting.
Okay, alright, so, alright, anyway, I'm done talking. Do I have a motion? Any questions? Somebody needs to make a motion to approve the lease agreement with LEISD.
I'll make a, uh, motion to approve the lease agreement with Little Elm Independent School District.
Alright, Eric's got the motion. The second. Alright, Eric, uh, Daryl's got the second, all of us in favor? Alright, awesome, alright, fantastic. Alright, next up, we have a consideration of variance request for front yard fence at seventy-seven. So what this is, is this is a landowner, and, um, what they're doing is they are putting up, they want a front fence, our fence requirements are three feet for front yard, so they're not, they're not asking for that. Um, the question that arose is one where, um, uh, they have a gate, and so they ask, the gate could be bigger than three feet. And I don't have a problem with that, that seems fine, I don't care. The fence is three, you know.
It's a road, it's a road.
It's a road, yeah, very nice, you know, it's like, well, what about a fence? Is the gate part of the fence? Uh.
An automatic gate?
But I think we're just being overly cautious and, uh, and. Okay, um, but, uh, anyway, so I, I don't have a problem with the gate, uh, obviously we have no fences, I don't want any fences taller than three feet in front yard, but the gate, I don't care about. So anyway, that's, that's my take on it.
This is the side yard too, and the, the property between him and there would be common.
Yeah, it's across the truck there.
So it's three is across the front, then it goes to probably a larger height or something?
The hitch line is way down at the end, so it's, it's six feet around the structure, and it's three feet all the way up.
But it's all wrought iron.
Like the house on stone, it would be like that?
It would be three feet all the way up.
Okay.
In the front yard, it's three feet, it's always three feet now.
Yeah.
There's two fences on stone, one of them got taken down, there's two now, but those are the original, we didn't have a fence ordinance when they came in, and they were the only houses here, so they got, they was a weekend home. They kind of wanted a fence because they were the only ones out. Uh, but we never, there's almost no fences in the front yard on, on stone and carrot, not even three-foot fence, there are no fences in the front yard. So this one's on a cul-de-sac way back, so they want to fence the front, which is fine. Um, the only question that came up was the gate itself. So this says a variance for a, a fence, it's really, it's the gate that we're going to approve, the gate being over three feet.
The car gate and the person of, what they call it, per gate?
Yeah. Okay, so I don't want, I don't want you to approve a variance for a fence, I want you to approve a variance for the gate. Okay? Everybody's okay with, I think it's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it still needs all the water, the car needs to see through.
Still see through it.
It's like a nice compromise.
Yeah.
I have a motion to approve the variance request for front yard fence.
Matt makes a motion to approve a variance.
A yard gate.
A front yard gate. Alright, Eric's got the second, all of us in favor? Alright, thank you, we got the gate. Uh, Eric was the second, yes. Alright, uh. Yes, the gates only, no fence.
Right.
Gate. Alright, next up, number four, consideration of zoning change application for Sam Hill Ventures. Okay, so, um, this is the, uh, obviously the zoning we've been working on for the last two years. Um, the only thing I see in here is something we've talked about before, there was one minor change, which is on, if you guys have this on page six, page one, it's on, uh, page five or six of the PDF, um.
Yeah, page forty, page fifty of the packet.
I'm sorry.
And page two of the, of the document.
Correct. Okay, so in that table, it says, uh, maximum lot coverage slash, you got it? Maximum lot coverage slash impervious surface. That's not what we have in our ordinance is, in our zoning, what we have is the maximum front yard impervious surface. Okay? We, we, we want to make sure you don't concrete your entire front yard, it's not the lot, if it was the lot, I could concrete my entire front yard because I've got two acres in the backyard. So it's not the lot, it's the front yard. So that's going to now read maximum front yard impervious surface, and it's going to be fifty percent all the way across. And that's consistent with our zoning in the whole rest of the city. Okay? So that's, that's one change.
And so that would settle their, it would be fifty percent right now, so fifty percent for type A and B, and it will be fifty percent for type A, B, and.
And C. Okay, that means the whole city is the same. Um, the only other change, and it's, it's in here, I found it earlier, I have to loop that, is that, uh, they made a request to change the garage size from, uh, twenty-five down to twenty, so they, they want garages to be twenty by twenty, was their request, and that came from, uh, apparently their builder. And it was kind of interesting, that was an interesting conversation, like, you know, why do you want twenty by twenty? Well, because builders think that's a better number, why do you want it twenty-five by twenty-two? Um, uh, because, uh, it's always been, I don't know, where did that number come from? Uh, I don't know, you know, so that's fair, right? So they think twenty by twenty, they use obviously very nice garage doors, which garage was, I think, so I think that's fine. It, you know, I don't have a problem with that. That's one of the changes I'm aware of in here, um, that, it was redlined before, I had to take out two red lines, just so we could. Twenty by twenty is in, I believe it's in the, in the.
It's actually eighteen by twenty plus in here.
Well, I saw twenty by twenty in.
I think, you know, page fifty-three is okay.
Is that for all the zones or is that for them?
Number four, garage is eighteen in west.
Twenty by twenty, number four garage, twenty feet in west by twenty feet in west.
I think, so Clint's on the block C, so Clint's on the small, so the small is. So basically, okay. Um, other than that, everything is, you know, same thing we've been talking about for over two years. So I think it's, it's really good for us, I think there's a lot of green space, I really like it, you know, I think we did a great job in, uh, negotiating this with Sam Hill. I think Sam Hill did, did really good for us to give us land for the entrance, give us land for City Hall, lots of parks, a trail system, you know, pocket parks, I mean, I think we, it's really going to be a nice addition to the city, really nice. Um, so I, uh, I think it's really good. So any questions from you, any comments, anybody?
In a long time.
In a long time.
Should be very nice when it's done.
Um, what, do you have anything?
No, I changed it, yeah.
Okay.
We've had plenty of, we heard of that just in play, but we need a public hearing.
Yeah, I know, a long question.
Nice job of telegraphing it for the zoning license.
Well, you know, I've heard the mayor's letters repeatedly, um, so I think, uh, you know, I think it's, it's really good.
You know, when you look at the, you know, content plan they have, it's a nice, fits to the, you know, fits nicely with what our, with what our kind of vision is, and I can't think of the name, or, it's sort of a plan.
Master plan?
Master plan, thank you. The master inventory of houses that we don't have, so, that's what I'm calling.
Alright.
Alright, I'll make a motion, we approve the zoning change application by Sam Hill Ventures.
So Daryl makes the historic motion to approve on new development. Serena steals the second, alright. Are you all of us in favor? Alright, we got you now, that's good to everybody. Alright, very good, thank you. Alright, next up, we have the, um, uh, row and replat for four nineteen. So this is, so the owner of four nineteen, which is about in the middle of the page, where you see kind of two empty lots, um, in the packet, there's a picture, I don't know if you guys can see it, it's on page sixty-five in your packet. Um, anyway, so the new owner has bought that lot. Um, anyway, so the new owner has bought that lot and, uh, highway fifty-two, I believe, used to run behind those properties, and when, obviously the light came in, they had to reroute the highway. So part behind those houses along there is thirty foot, it's our side of the street, it's our half of the sixty foot. So what we have done various people is we just give it to the people that live next to it, they get to add thirty feet to their backyard. So we sell it for a dollar, and then they have to replat to include that thirty feet. So this gentleman hasn't done all the paperwork, he's bought it and he's requested it, he hasn't turned in the paperwork yet, but because we're not gonna meet next month, I wanted to get you guys to approve it so that I can just sign it when he does get it done and he can move on. That make sense? So that's that little horizontal strip in the back, that thirty feet there.
Only cross two of them, none off of them.
Yeah, this is crossing, so you can, and most people along there have already done that. This one was an empty lot, so there's nobody to do it.
So it's just one of these two empty lots?
It's the one to the left. Yeah, so it's the bigger one to the left that, um, that's gonna do it, okay? And then, he's gonna replat if we, chicken and egg, he can't replat land that he doesn't own. We can't sell it to, you know, so, I just, I wanna give him the go-ahead and have you guys authorize me just to sign the replat.
Which is a nice, a nice thing to do because it's not gonna be a surveyor contracting these days and it's just, have a little insurance that's gonna go before you go pay the survey.
Yeah, exactly. So anybody have any questions on the replat? So basically, there's two things I need you, I need you to approve, selling our right-of-way for a dollar, um, to the adjacent landowner. Uh, we had one person years ago wanted to buy it all behind everybody else, they wanted to own everybody else's yard. We said no. Uh, so, selling that for a dollar, uh, and then the second thing would be to, uh, authorize me to, to approve the replat, that make sense? Okay, so authorize the sale for a dollar and.
Can we do that all in one motion, the whole thing?
Okay.
Well, I make a motion, we approve the sale of the abandoned right-of-way.
Okay, so the abandoned right-of-way to the adjacent homeowner. Matt's got the second, all those in favor? All right, thank you.
I'm gonna make a motion, we approve you to replat, to approve the replat at four nineteen Lake.
Okay, so you got a motion to approve the replat of four nineteen, Serena's got the second, all those in favor, thank you. All right, great, so we'll get him going. All right, very good. Next up, we have concrete roads, let me give you the update there. Um, we had a little bit of a minor issue about, uh, maybe two weeks ago, they were working on Melody at the intersection, at the same time they had pulled a couple days earlier, the Woodcrest intersection, which means if you're in the shores, you've got